We don't want to allow participants to mute themselves. Check the box. Cool. There you go. That's the one.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're starting a couple of minutes late. Welcome to the January twenty twenty four monthly meeting. This is the meeting when we hear from our departments, standing boards, and municipal partners and the trustees make their reports on their work. Clark, may I have a roll call, please?
May I follow you?
Here.
Trusty Starbuck?
Here.
Trusty Woods?
Here.
Trusty Bozey?
Here.
Trusty Freebark?
Trusty Timmar is traveling for work and is not able to join electronically as he had hoped. Okay, opportunity to request to vote to add or modify agenda items. I would like to make a request to add the recommendation of the Tree Advisory Board to the agenda. It was provided in the packets and in the public posting twenty-four hours ahead of the meeting, but we did not initially have it when the trustees will matter, the agenda went out.
It was added this morning. It was not added twenty-four.
Oh, you said it wasn't on the website yesterday? Okay, so that's what we get. And we'd like to add it for discussion, and when we get to that item, we can decide whether or not we want to take it up as a vote this evening. So is everyone comfortable with adding that to the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah. Announcements. We will talk more about it under reports, but just confirming that all streets west of Lund Terrace are still closed. Our roadways and facility clearly worked through the night twice this week. And all through the day today, I needed to get some sleep, so the, there is a debris field from the last high tide that needs to be. And there will be another high tide this evening around ten that still needs to be cleared. So that's, the streets are closed to all but local traffic, and local traffic means if you live on those streets. So Fish Market, West North at New. And Metro North Service is in service again. I'm sure they'll want to figure that out by now, but you can, you can access the train station via Lund Terrace. So thank you for everyone for being patient. These guys needed a, needed a break. Okay, so we'll go to reports and village departments. Any other announcements before we do that?
Christmas tree re pickup is tomorrow.
Christmas tree re pickup is tomorrow, and everything needs to be off the trees.
Lights, tinsel, garland, et cetera. You could remove it. Would be much appreciated by Royal. And I cannot read this. I'm just looking for the unmute. I think she allowed Michelle.
So once we have Michelle unmuted, we will take the report from the village accountant.
Just, you're gonna have your buddy.
Do you need my glasses? There you go. Okay. Thanks for being patient, everybody, and especially Michelle.
Okay. Good eve- Good evening, everybody. For the January meeting, we're going to go over the past seven months of expenses and revenue and going forward. Two quick announcements before that. I'm working on end-of-year tax filing right now. The W two's ten ninety-nines, they will be completed by the end of January. And a friendly reminder that the budget process will be starting in early February. Onto financial statements. So the, the primary focus is the general fund right now. Projections for the general fund in revenue versus expense is about twelve thousand more in expenses than we have in revenue. Compared to the last quarterly report, it was forty-three thousand difference. So we are closing the gap. Some of those things will go over through the report. On the revenue side, overall, I'm projecting that will be under budget by about seventy-nine thousand. When I talk about under budget, excluding grants and one-for-one items, so CHIPS. You know, if CHIPS has a revenue, it has an expense, a grant, if there's a revenue and expense. So since all that's net zero, we're not talking about those things. We're talking about regular everyday operating items. So the budget is seventy-nine thousand less than revenue. And most of those is because of unrealized items such as occupancy tax, parking lot and parking meter revenue, and a little bit of the STR permits. As we move through the legislation, these revenues will pick back up. They haven't been implemented yet. We're on our way to the parking permits and parking meters, and that helps. The Friday meters was not in the original budget, and so that helps close a little bit of the gap. Also to note, for revenue that we weren't expecting, the bank interest rate on the general fund and any of our money market accounts is still pretty high. And so if that stays through May, the interest will be about thirty thousand dollars over budget, which is a nice change even from last report. I thought it was going to be eighteen thousand, and I think it's going to be thirty now if we keep up these interest rates. The, the sale of real property at Thirty-Seven Fair Street, that was twenty thousand that we weren't expecting, and the parking permits weren't budgeted for. The meters were, but not the permits, so that offsets some of the meter delays. On the expense side, about sixty-seven thousand under budget. Some of those savings come from health insurance. I projected a twelve percent increase. We're at about a ten percent increase as of January. Little bit of staff changes has the savings in a month here or there. There are savings if we don't do Granicus for STRs. If we push that off to at least June first, that's eleven thousand dollars to save. The prosecuting attorney has been coming in under his quote so far every month. That's about a nine thousand dollar savings. For expenses that are over, some salary lines are spent over mostly the highway department. Given all the flooding, we expected that. Hopefully, a mild winter will help offset that. But because a lot of the flooding has happened, you know, earlier in the summer, hopefully that, you know, that can be recouped some of that by FEMA at seventy-five percent, and this projection now is the same as it was, you know, four months ago. Other salaries are pretty much on track. Little bit of savings from parking enforcement. We had budgeted for two, and we only have one filling the spot right now. Increases, engineering and general attorney are pretty high. Engineering, if, if we keep spending on average, it's probably going to be about twenty-four thousand over the budget. Again, hopefully FEMA will cover about seventy-five percent of some of that. And then the attorneys, given what's going on, I'm projecting that to be about, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the year. Attorneys in the general fund usually have been anywhere from fifty to sixty budgeted and spent, so it's almost doubled. If attorney fees aren't as high in the later months of the fiscal year, that might not be as high, but right now, using averages and what we've been experiencing, that line is going to be very over budget. And the way to offset that right now is through fund balance. We allocated three hundred thousand of fund balance to do one-off projects. We have about sixty thousand of unspent on those projects. So if we don't do any more big projects, which we're supposed to, that fund balance can cover some of that, or the most of that attorney overage. General rule of thumb, we're not going to budget to do that. If it happens once in a while throughout the operating year, it is what it is, but we're never going to budget to have operating expenses come out of fund balance. But because it's there, we, it's better than being in a deficit. The only pending fund balance project that we didn't get to that we thought would be out of that three hundred thousand were the dock lights. We ordered them and paid for those. It's just the the installation of them. That project would have to see how we are in the spring.
Yeah, and to clarify, we held, we held those after we had vandalism at the end of the season last year. Officer Burke recommended that we hold until cameras are in place. We need to take a look at that as well. Go ahead.
That's only, we've only built, seen bills through the end of November, correct?
Yeah, so we're fifty-eight thousand spent through November thirtieth services, which is the budget's at seventy-five, so it's almost actually spent already.
And it's also important to note that, two things. We're, we're in a time when we need professionals guiding us as both engineers and attorneys. I did look back at attorney expenses over a number of years, and there is a year when at the twthing like we're in right now, where a resident and a neighbor decided, you know, opted to sue the village, and we spent quite a lot of money defending the village against that. That was almost eighty. So this is not, it's not pleasant, and it's, it's, it feels like a, you know, a pretty unfortunate way to spend budget money, but it's where we are, and we need our attorneys to do that. So here we are. Anything else for Michelle or any questions?
I just had an observation as we're thinking about our calendar for the year. The occupancy tax, yeah, we're just projecting it to start five thirty-one, so we definitely want to hit having it for May thirty-first, but if there's a way to be even early, then perhaps we could close the gap with that. I don't know the logistics of that, but just to put that on the table.
Jeff and I were talking about calendarizing today. We have a few other legislative priorities. Old stuff we want to wrap up at the same time. It'd be good to do it all at once.
Occupancy tax, we still need to write the local law.
It's not, it is not complex. It's just a matter of getting the time to do it.
But it is time, silly.
Yeah.
You have to write the law, public hearings, and the whole process.
So we want to get going on it.
Exactly.
Is there some sort of templated language for that?
It comes roughly out of the enabling legislation.
Okay, so it's not, we're not like reinventing.
There are other municipalities that have it, so we can look at them and and copy that, but it's still.
It's still time. So, you know, we've taken out a lot of legislative priorities and we're getting through them. Anything else for Michelle?
I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Roadways and facilities, we're going to talk quite a lot about storm response under my report, so I would just note that all of these reports from all of the departments and all of our standing boards are available on our website. The highway, the roadways and facilities crew has been engaged in a lot of storm response. And we are looking to hire. Unfortunately, we lost a fantastic worker to another town that can pay more than we can. So we're sorry to see Jake go, but we are looking to hire another full-time roadways and facilities member. So if you're looking, please get in touch with the club. Water and wastewater, I think we have Matt with us. Hi, Matt. Oh, hang on, we have to ask you to unmute. Wait, we're down to the bottom, very bottom. There you go.
All right, there we, hello. Uh, yeah, so it's been pretty wet, so, yeah. Reservoirs are definitely in a lot better standing than they were last year. Did use a little bit more water in the past month, but, yeah, it was a relatively quiet month. Bacteriologic standing or samples weren't found in good standing. We had the emergency generators at both facilities serviced last month, so trying to work on wrapping up the stragglers of the CDM endpoint replacement program. Uh, that pretty much wraps up for the water wastewater side of things. We should be getting the replacement RAS chart recorder sometime next week. Uh, and then hopefully get that installed and get back in there.
Great. And Michelle was helping you follow up with ARPA, right? Your, the, our the bid is bid is ready for the filters. Michelle, did you find the person you needed in the county? Jen, Jennifer? Were you able to connect to her? Do we have to unmute her? Sorry, Michelle. Sorry, Jeff. So that's Rebecca, Rebecca, there you go.
I did reach out to Jennifer. She is not the correct person. She forwarded the email to the purchasing department. She reached out to them, and I reached out to them. I have not heard back. Will does have the bid drafted, but I do think it's missing some requirements, so I'm not comfortable, you know, sending that out until we make sure that we're hitting, you know, we have to hit our procurement, the states, ARPA is the county. There's a lot of moving parts here.
So it's John Tully's team?
Yes.
I will introduce John. Thank you very much. And while we have both of you on the phone also and unmuted, I mean, online, update on the IMA, Matt and Michelle, the IMA with Phillipstown for daily water testing at Garrison Landing. Michelle and Matt have been working on a fee schedule. They think they've landed on a number that takes into account average rate and mileage that needs to come to us to approve before we can finalize that. Accounts have been sent, set up for chemical purchases, correct? Go ahead.
I was gonna say currently just the laboratory testing, the chemical we're still working on, but that should be closed out shortly.
Phillipstown has received a promising proposal from a company called SEMCO. They're working on negotiating number with SEMCO. They may need weekend support a bit longer until they get that in place, but we're hoping this can be a a quick turnaround and get Matt back from Garrison. How's it going there? You've been testing since January one, yeah?
Yep, uh, yeah, it's, we're chugging along, uh, keeping them in water and then compliance so far.
Thank you very much for that. Anything else? And Matt? Food enforcement, Jeff?
And, you know, there's really not much to talk about. I was in here in December, so I was just based numbers. I do want to say thank you to Karen, who picked up the ball and was able to do a lot of stuff. Wasn't always easy, but she did it, and I'm very appreciative of keeping stuff going well. That was awesome. Thank you to Karen.
Police departments, our officer charges here. Do you have the camera?
I saw an error in the monthly, so I removed that. I will be replacing it. The numbers here for the month of December. We had sixty-six calls for service, and that gives us a total of seven hundred and forty-five for the year. We had seventy-six summonses, parking and moving violations, and that gives us a total of I mean, one second, nine hundred and seventy-five summonses for the year. We write about average on our calls. A little more with the, with the flood, because we respond with the fire department and EMS on all, all the calls. So the eight, the assist citizens, the aiders that come in were a little high. They tended to be between twelve and eighteen, so that's where we're, we're still kind of at. I know the last bit going on, a couple of streets being closed. I thank the residents for their patience on that. Unfortunately, we have to do that, and we have to maneuver the school buses down other streets to get them to and from the, the school safely, safely, I should say. Couple of updates. The CAD system for the county is up and running. They're finding a lot of bumps on it. Working through a lot of upgrades and people learning how to learn on the system, so we're going to have to have a lot, a lot more training coming up for our, our offices, including the sheriff's office. They, they were, they're willing to help us out on whatever we need. So that was a good phone call I received yesterday. And just to go over, it's tax season, and every time during tax season, fraud is out there. So people are either trying to steal your information, try and file taxes in your, on your behalf and stealing your ID and stuff like that. Please be wary. Do not give any information out. No bank should be calling you on the phone. Nobody's saying, I work for the IRS. You need to give me your social security number so we can straighten this out. I will bring one incident up when I was working in December. M and T Bank, one of their managers had noticed a customer wanted to take out a large sum of money in cash. She notified us immediately. I responded to the bank. I interviewed the the resident, and it was a scam. Basically, somebody in their family was being held by a court, and they needed fifteen thousand dollars to release their, their relative from court.
That is a story.
Yes, it can only, it can only be done in cash. So immediately, I notified the Platte County Sheriff's Office, their investigation team. They came over. They set up a couple of undercovers. And the courier that was supposed to come and receive the money was intercepted and arrested. They did a great job on that. All of us did between the bank, which the bank, right off the bat, notified us, which is what they normally do, the managers on both banks, Wells Fargo and M and T. I apologize for not, not remembering the manager's name.
Carla.
But they did, sorry.
Was it Carla?
Yes, Carla, she did an excellent job. So it was perfect and be leery of something like going on. That's happened in the past. So just, again, if it's not anybody you know, anybody from your family, always make a phone call. If they say your grandson or your grandchild is, is in jail, make sure you reach out to them or somebody that will. And that is about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Larry? And our fire chief, what's up with the feed name? We should say that this storm year, not the village, it's consistently, consistently prior company getting nailed too with responses. The chief has been very present and assisting our team at different locations in the village, and we're grateful for his time in addition.
Uh, we had fourteen calls for December and two hundred and forty-seven for the year, which is it usually would be like one eighty, so. Busy year for us, but, um, major. Need to check your batteries and smart detectors and finger chimneys.
Fewer mountain rescues. More flood response.
I think we only did three or four mountain rescues for the entire year, so Evan, a couple of people really filled it for us.
And having, having the stairs to walk up. And making four trails.
And you've also gotten new recruits, right? Do you know recruits?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how many this year, but we I think over the last five or six years, we've gotten around ten to fifteen. And then I think eight of them have taken all the classes, so. Considering it's a good amount.
So building on what Larry was describing with parking summonses, et cetera, it's notable that fifty-six percent of the income to the court is a result of parking tickets. So although we only have one parking enforcement officer, now he's just been kicking it all through season, and we extended the time a bit, and that helped as well. So on the court side, five defendants, one prosecuted under penal law, one four under vehicle on traffic, and total income of six thousand nine hundred and twelve for the month of December. Yeah. Okay. Um, report, reports from our standing boards and committees, HTRB is actually, they did not meet in December, and they're meeting next on January sixteenth, so we'll catch up with them February meeting. Planning board did not meet in December, and Jeff, how are we doing with scheduling interviews? Okay, so we'll be there. We had initially talked about Tuesday evening next week, evening or daytime?
Well, we're gonna see when the board develops, when.
So if folks are around Tuesday evening, but if you could let Jeff know, if you are, that would be helpful.
Next week?
Yeah.
You can do it. So why, if we don't have items for an agenda, you can do it Wednesday.
Yeah.
Just have an executive session to interview people instead of a meeting.
Yes, that's probably easier for everyone on schedule. Okay. But we do have the zoning board chair here. Welcome, Eric. Do you like to meet here?
Real news from ZBA. We had one meeting in December. A public hearing for a routine request for an addition, which the board approved. So, no, no news.
I just would like to say congratulations for the outcome that you, your board achieved at Thirty-Seven Fair Street. There was a, a request for a fence variance along the front, which zoning board denied in keeping with our code. And the, the final result is, is really spectacular. There's now an iron, a four-foot iron fence in front of the building and planted behind it. I think they're, they look like U's. But it, it's a, makes a tremendous difference. A six-foot fence there would have really had a visual impact. So well done, zoning board.
Neighbor escape, that really didn't potent, routine, but it planned, which helped us shape our thinking.
Great. How the process works. Thank you. Okay, Tree Advisory Board, we have Chair Swarik here. Yeah. You want to?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm trying to turn my camera on, sorry. I'm not great with Zoom. I can't figure out how to do it, so. I guess I'll just give it without.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, hello, everyone. The Tree Advisory Board did not meet in December due to the holiday. However, we did have some email business that we took care of, and I am happy to make the following reports. The most exciting thing that I'd like to make is that we have won a forty thousand dollar grant from the Anahata Foundation for Sustainability. And I'm just thrilled with the whole thing. It is for a project entitled the Cold Spring Community Collinon Project, which is basically supportive of our street tree collinons and park trees. And it involves three different parts, and we're going to be starting working on it right away, so I'm excited about that. Thank you to the Anahata Foundation for this funding.
How very important it is in one particular aspect, which is that it will help us pay for a demonstration project for root, tree root sidewalk conflict and a better solution to those problems that preserves. And we've needed.
That's right. Um, that's right. Thank you, Kathleen. And the important thing about that is we never have money to do that ever in all the time I've been here, and so this is really exciting. Because it could mean we could figure out how to do that, you know, how to scale that to the rest of the village. If it, if it worked well, we'll get some experience and be able to see how it works. So that's great. The second update I have is we've just been doing regular dormant season work. Removing or backing out tree tags, so tree tag maintenance, protecting the poor new trees on St. Mary's Lawn from the sledding that happened a couple of days ago, which was great. Nothing got damaged. We put wood boxes around part of the trees. Uh, and we are working on our RFP for winter pruning. That is, has been boosted by this grant project, so it's going to be a larger, much larger group of winter pruning, including trees that are very valuable to us that we don't usually prune, because they, they don't have anything hazardous right now, but they could use some structural pruning to allow them to live much longer, a much longer lifespan. So I'm excited to continue to work on that, and our last update, number three on my report, is we've passed on to you our recommendation for resolving a request by residents of B Street and Mountain Avenue regarding a village parcel on the southeast corner of B Street and Mountain Avenue and tree, tree cutting requests or removal requests that was received. And I have connected with you guys and the sort of detailed recommendation that we made. I don't know what, how much you want me to go over, but it basically. Go ahead, Kathleen.
I was just gonna say, you can sort of summarize. This is a, it's a village-owned lot on the corner of B and Mountain that has a number of trees growing on it. Neighbors requested pruning and removal. Your board reviewed and is making the following recommendations, which you're going to talk us through. I just want to make clear that the Tree Advisory Board goes through a process actually very similar to the zoning board in terms of judging, criteria to judge. And so Jen, maybe you can talk us through the, the criteria briefly and, and let us know what conclusions you made based on based on your criteria, you had two public hearings?
Uh, yes, I mean, they weren't technically a public hearing, but they were public meetings, uh, because we're actually not required to hold them. We just do that as a courtesy, so yeah, we had two meetings, they were way far apart unfortunately due to some personal issues, but we got them done and um, they were noticed in the paper ahead of time. Um, there were signs posted on the lot and we did receive um, some comments particularly from a neighbor across the street. Uh, Jerry Allen, who was opposed to the proposal um, for a variety of reasons. So Kathleen, do you want me to walk you through just what, what we're proposing, what we're recommending be done on this lot? And the reasoning, okay. So the criteria worksheet, which I didn't forward to you guys, cause it's very long, basically the gist of it is, uh, we have like step one, step two, step three, when we're looking at each tree. And uh, we're trying to make sure that whatever we do to the tree is in the public interest and in the village's interest, so that the village doesn't lose valuable property. For example, just removing a tree for no reason would be a net loss to the village, so we don't wanna do that. Um, but we wanna make sure that we're, when uh, sort of when we receive complaints from village residents or we have requests like this that are optional requests. Um, we wanna make sure that what comes out of it is a sort of a win for the village or a, a gain for the village and not a loss for the village tree inventory, if that makes sense. So in this case, go ahead.
To emphasize it, it's important, I think, you're tasked with protecting and increasing our entire public canopy and ensuring its longevity for the benefit of all. I think that's a really important.
That's right. So uh, uh, in, for this lot, this is a um, a lot that has had various uses over the past fifty years or in the village, but since I've lived here, um, it's mostly been an un, uh, you know, just a sort of like a urban canopy, it's been allowed to have trees grow up in it. Um, so there's trees of various ages in it and uh, it was used for, I think, winter parking at some point, a long time ago, but it's no longer used for that, so it's kind of just like an open space, open green tree canopy space in the village, we have lots and lots of these on the margins of different properties, this is not a unique parcel. Um, the, the main complaints from the residents, both residences, um, Donald McDonald and Charlotte and John Lane um, involved sort of the unkept nature of the lot and the idea that the lot is turning into kind of a forested lot instead of what, whatever it used to be, um, the central, I sort of summarized the central concerns in this letter, which I won't go over, but uh, I will say that the tree board found, you know, the safety concern, if there is a safety concern, that's like sort of our priority, we can't ignore a safety concern, so there was a safety concern for one of the trees. That's in the, um, on the map, uh, it's tree B, which is like a tri-trunked Norway maple. And there was another concern that, that some of these Norway maples that are, two of them are, you know, medium sized trees now, they're they're kind of competing with a spruce that's on, an older spruce that's on the property as well, so it's become kind of this forested area and they're not killing the tree or anything, but they're competing with it, so the lower branches of the spruce have, you know, thinned out because it's not receiving light. Um, and so we are asking the village board or we're recommending that we do address the safety issue, we had an arborist evaluate tree B and uh, it can be uh, that sort of mitigated by some substantial pruning of one of the three trunks and some general thinning of the canopy to make it safer and less of a breakage risk. Um, and basically the other trees on the property, there's one uh, the hemlock that's almost dead, which is a very small four inch uh, caliper tree and another smaller Norway maple that's crowding out a hemlock there. We're recommending removing because the, the negative effects of removing them um, are outweighed by the benefit, which is, one of them is dead, so it's just a kind of unsightly removal that, that needs to happen, and the other one is crowding out a, uh, a native hackberry that if we we would like to encourage that to grow to be a mature tree there, instead of the Norway maple, it's a more desirable tree, stronger wooded, et cetera, it's better as an urban tree. So those are the two small trees we're recommending removing, and the other tree we're recommending some pruning of, as I said, and the other ones in the list we're recommending not doing anything to, they're leaving them there. So that's the basic summary, um, tree A, which is on this map, the closest to Mr. McDonald's residence, was removed from the application because it really, the complaint was mostly it needed to be, have some maintenance, so it was a um, off, lifted off the roof a little bit, which is a routine request we get all over the village all the time, so we're dealing with that tree as a routine maintenance request, not as a major pruning request, basically. Um, so that's my summary, it's longer in the letter, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So you said it was three trees that you're removing total?
No, just two trees, uh, tree, tree F, which is the hemlock that's almost dead, it's very small. And tree, uh, G, I believe, which is a small volunteer Norway maple that's very close to the hackberry.
So uh, remove G and F, no modification to C and E. Safety pruning on B and routine maintenance on A.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions from trustees? And both neighbors are on board with this, with this plan, it seems, yes?
Um, it's, yeah, in the meeting, uh, everyone was agreeable, I think ideally, uh, at least Mr. Lane would like the lot to be no trees on it and to have a pollinator garden, which was his main request, but he obviously is a reasonable person and um, through discussion, we came to this as a, uh, the best sort of way forward. Um, I will note that one of his large concerns was uh, these mature trees growing and shading a solar panel on his roof that was installed um, a year ago or two, I think. Um, definitely after the trees were already growing there for a very long time, so we, at least um, in this sort of case by case basis, in this instance, the tree board does not feel that uh, you know, competing with a solar panel is a reason to remove a pre-existing, you know, middle aged trees that are growing in the village. Um, so that was sort of a point of contention, I think, or disagreement uh, between Mr. Lane and the tree board, but uh, again, the tree board was sort of looking out for the interests of the entire public in this lot and uh, for the village and so it was sort of a a compromise that we came to.
There's also another, your conversation with the neighbors pulls out something that's on, on our list, right? Something we need to put on our list, which is maintenance on this lot, there are a number of these little pocket lots around the village that are undeveloped, this one happens to be pretty prominent. If I had to guess, um, roadways and facilities probably hasn't given a lot of direction to take care of this parcel. Um, so that is something that we can discuss with them is how we maintain this parcel in a way that is more presentable for our neighbors around it. Um, I, I personally, I feel very comfortable with the recommendation that tree board has made, your process is rigorous. Um, and I think that you found ways to compromise to meet some of everyone's goals, so I feel comfortable approving it. I mean, if, if anyone has concern, it was, as we said, it was not on the village website twenty-four hours in advance, we can table it if you'd like. Given that it's gone through the public process with the tree board, I myself am comfortable, what do others think? I think we can vote on it tonight.
I just wanna point out the twenty-four hours in advance.
Yes, one practical.
It's not always possible, we do our best effort, but it's not written in stone that it has to be. We make every effort to make sure that it is.
And it has been up since this morning.
But there has been public process.
Yes, they had two public meetings on it and received public comment. So I feel comfortable voting, Tweeps feels comfortable voting, Eliza, okay, so um, I would make a motion to accept the recommendation of the tree advisory board in relation to the village lot at the corner of Mountain Avenue and B Street. All in favor? Hi, Jen, thank you so much. Now, congratulations on my name.
Thank you. Cheers.
You too, Happy New Year. I think it's on the next page here. Okay, um, so the, the uh, you recall that we went through a process with this board and the HDRB related to chess tables, they're installed. I don't know if anyone's familiar with them, Jeff, can you just stop sharing? And the rec commission is working with Friends of Phillips Town Rec and Partnership, five oh one C three, to start fundraising for the dog park. Um, and so I would encourage people to give, 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 um, and we'll be spreading the word about that on the website, social media, et cetera, um. The holding, holding is, we are in a period where holding um, is responsible, sorry, no, we are in the winter now. I'm raising the, the issue of um, continued flood damage at Mayor's Park, um, and how it is, is gonna be problematic for holding from spring. Um, luckily they've not lost a lot to wash out, but um, it is just a reality on that parcel.
I have a question.
Yep.
Of course, uh, the um, butterfly garden that's planned at Todd's Park. Have there been their action, I'm asking because I'm been in touch with um, Heidi Wendell, who's installed a bunch of gardens. And um, and asked her, um, if uh, there were any village sites where there might be a new um, garden and we have some extra fund so we had the funding for it, she had some interest and she identified Todd Park, so wondering if, so the person who's spearheading that, it did, it was approved by the rec commission, approved by this board, the plan is for spring, it was an issue with figuring out watering. Um, is Alex um, oh, from the rec, yeah, I can't think of her last name right now, Alex on the rec commission.
Okay, and is there funding for the plants?
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know that level of detail they were working on. So that would be a great matchup, actually. Thank you for thinking about it. Maybe someone can help me out with that. Okay, updates from our municipal partners, uh, the Phillips Town Town Board is in session this evening, we have two public hearings tonight. Um, we gave an update on the um, intermunicipal agreement. Uh, the highway parking lot is now paved and I saw one of the fire trucks coming out, fueling the area and going successfully. Um, and the health department, the county health department has approved, um, new well connection for the water district, it's up on the way. Legislative Montgomery um, is in session tonight as well, I, I just wanna thank her for her help during the storm. In particular, I have been asking um, the DOT to clean out the hatch basins at the intersection of ninety and three oh one since the July storm, they were still packed from the July storm. I spoke to them again after the last storm, um, called yesterday morning and said, you've got to do something with all the water we have coming. Um, and Nancy helped, helped push along that request yesterday and around four in the afternoon, they did come and vector out that intersection, it was not pleasant in the rain. Um, and I believe she also assisted Nelsonville with getting them uh, up on Seacore. Right, so the one where the, that's the circular street, the back Seacore, um, so, thank you Legislative Montgomery. Uh, okay, report from the mayor and the board of trustees. What's going on, we know Elon's gonna give us an update, we have a planned public session coming, right, on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, we had not discussed it yet, but that was, yeah, a suggestion from the clerk, which I think is a good one. Um, something where people can come bring their questions, we can kind of review what people can expect, it's a slow rollout of what we're doing with the parking plan, so it's not all gonna slam and happen at once. We're making time for everyone to come and get their permits, you can get applications now, they're posted on the website. Um, and the clerk has them here and um, we're mailing them out to residents next week. So if you don't see it in your mail, um, and you believe you should get one, this is for the residents in the parking district, so not all residents will get it. But if you're in the areas that are eligible to get a parking permit for residents, then it should come in your mail, um, and then we're gonna give everybody about a month and a little bit more uh, to the beginning of March to get your permits. Um, and then we will start enforcement in March. So we're gonna prorate them so that no one has to pay for the two months that we missed. Um, and uh, hope everyone can come to the twenty-fourth meeting, just to bring questions. Um, meters will come after, so we're gonna get this set first, make sure all the residents have their permits and have that sort of transition in before we turn on the meters and start another thing to transition into. All gonna be staged so that it goes slowly and everyone has time to get on board.
You are the nicer to grant queen.
Tell us more. Uh, well, so um, I think, so we're part of two programs now, Clean Energy Communities and Climate Smart. Um, I think both will produce um, some grants that will be really exciting. Um, my preference of actually to um, schedule, I was, I was going to pitch for the twenty-fourth to kind of collapse everything together and do a big discussion, but it's only the twenty-fourth won't work, so I'd like to get on the calendar a couple of times, um, we can go through. We, we have our funding confirmed for the EV chargers, so we need to um, select the contract. Um, I'll talk through some of these larger grants for clean energy communities and um, how we can make sure that we get them.
Do you some of that next week, since we have, can see agenda so far is life?
And I would like to talk potentially at Nexus Department Heads Meeting about the um, EV chargers, if that's possible. So that's Thursday. So that's Thursday, so, but um, but I could do some of the other, the other kind of background, just kind of orient everybody on the other two programs and all the funding that we're strategic. Um, and do that next week, um, and maybe balance that with the interviews, I don't think it's gonna take too long.
Yeah.
So we could do both next week. Great, and then the following week, is it possible to add something to the public meeting about?
I feel hesitant to add anything. Big topic, um, and, and we wanna make sure that we have both the time and the train power.
Wait a minute, I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-fourth, sorry.
All right. So, so let's reconnect about scheduling the parking.
Sorry.
Great, um, I'll make one pitch, so uh, we already sent out this announcement, we're looking for um, closing residents to join the um, climate smart task force. So if anyone is interested in getting involved on our climate um, action work and climate resilience work, um, follow up with me and we're joining forces with the existing Phillips Town.
Are there any, are there village folks on that task force that might focus their energy on village issues?
Yeah, there are some, okay.
Yeah. Uh, but we, I think we could use, uh,
Absolutely.
More, more brain power, the better. Okay, so, so for Michael, um, ignore all the discussion that we just had about scheduling, we're gonna get back to you, it's coming next on the calendar. Uh, Chiefs, anything from you? Um, well, I'm gonna talk storm, storm, storm for a few minutes. Um, so we're continuing to work to claim our FEMA reimbursements from July, this is a really, it's a really long process. Um, our engineers are working on the design for the five locations, including in the damage inventory, to get presented a FEMA. Um, I will say that working, it was a really smart choice to work with a consultant to get this in. Um, it's, it, Michelle has been able to have a lot of relief working with him and the expertise is making things go smoother than it would have done without his help, so that is um, that has been great. Um, the past few days have been really hard on everyone. Um, but especially roadways and facilities, um, we barely recovered from the last rainstorm and when we got built up with snow, um, and then more rain on top, um, and unfortunately looks to be another whammy brewing to come in on Friday. Um, the snowstorm on Saturday was managed well with just two, two guys, and that's all that was available on Saturday. Um, they worked through the night on Saturday and stayed on till about five o'clock on Sunday, so they were wrecked. Um, and they rested on Monday, Sunday night and Monday to return, actually, I'm sorry, rested Sunday night to come in. We had a meeting at seven o'clock on Monday morning to get ready for the next storm. For the most part, the village fared better over the last day and a half than I think we expected. Um, and damages were constrained to the streets west of Long Terrace and Cedar Street. Um, we are actively living with climate collapse, that's it, that's all, that's where we are. Um, and we have to talk about it openly. Um, particularly um, Nancy Rebecca with us, particularly as um, New York State government is considering connecting our fragile waterfront to the yard trail. Um, I think we have to have really honest and serious conversations about our infrastructure needs at the waterfront and whether trail development makes sense in that part of the village. Um, so fighting at the waterfront, water, fighting flooding at the waterfront is super difficult because we're working with both river rise um, and the tides. That residential neighborhood takes a beating storm after storm by the swollen river and the push of the tides. Multiple basements flooded, I mean, the fire company was down um, pumping a couple of houses this afternoon. Um, and there's still a large debris field to be cleared down there. Um, the roadways crew stayed through the night last night and until about five this afternoon, they needed rest. Um, we made the call to close um, the streets west of Lund. Rest and come back and start fresh in the morning, um, so they'll be down there first thing. But until then, um, the roads, I think I mentioned this earlier, west of Lund Terrace are closed to local traffic only and local means you live on those streets. Um, not, you're a villager going down to take a look. There are, there are tons of devil heads, there's tree and driftwood debris that you shouldn't risk your ankles on or your tires. Um, in other parts of the village, we were as prepared as we could be last night. Um, unfortunately, we've gained a lot of experience in storm management since July. Um, and the process of planning and staging is getting smoother. Um, hate to say it, but it, it is, it's getting smoother. Um, the preemptive measures that we took, the catch basin clearing at a time, extensive sandbagging and proactive pumping minimized damages that the flooding could have caused on Caesar, Cedar, excuse me. Um, it was amazing, last night, it was a, a wall of water that came down through the Nelsonville Woods between um, eleven thirty and about twelve fifteen, um, through the Nelsonville Woods, because it was, it was a snowpack of nearly twelve inches um, on the mountain tops coming down. Um, and one of the larger streams in the Nelsonville Woods that runs along the blue trail eventually and comes out on Seacore Street. Um, it cut a large swath um, away from that path towards Seacore and toward Cedar Street. Um, so this is a different, this is a different set of scenarios now that we have to work with. Um, at Cedar Street, there is more water finding its way that way, you can look at it in a map when we um, meet with engineers. Um, but that needs to be calculated, the situation's happening at, so, been a lot. Um, I wanna say thank you to our municipal and institutional partners, um, the town um, for helping us secure the pumps that we had. Um, supervisor was in the field with the roadways and facilities crew through the night as well. Um, Haldane for being very proactive and communicative with us, um, particularly their SRO, fire company, of course. Um, and then there are some folks we have to thank especially. Um, there were village and Phillips Town residents who assisted with filling sandbags and then also layering them out on streets. Um, which is actually really backbreaking, difficult work. So I wanna recognize Jeff Sniffin and his son Will, um, and Will's girlfriend, um, Claire Bolte. Is it Claire? The older Claire, the older Bolte. I may, I may not have the right, or I have the right Bolte, but the older Bolte girl, Kate, Kate Bolte. Um, Adele from Main Street, um, and Dave Marzolo. Um, so now we get ready for Friday. And um, I have talked with a few of you individually, but we need to have a, a public conversation about capital project planning, um, and prioritizing and figuring out how, how we're gonna find ways to pay for all of these very big projects. So I'm hoping to have a proposal to you soon for some, and I want us to be, we have lots of expertise in the village, financial expertise um, and engineering expertise that I'd like to engage as part of that process. Another, it's another good way to have folks contributing.
I think it's a great idea, I, I do have a spreadsheet I'll share with you soon.
We love the spreadsheets.
Uh, grants that we have, and I think it's like now, but we have, the, the timing aligns with the fact that there's a lot of federal state funding for um, infrastructure and climate, climate resilience work, so. At least there are opportunities.
The opportunities are there. Okay, that is um, everything from me. John, you joined us later, we did approve that recommendation, yes, we did approve the recommendation, no seat tab, nice to see you.
I thought I would come in person rather than here in case there were questions during the thing. And since it's been a long process, uh, right?
Yes, and we did, we did, we did accept the recommendations of seat tab, and it looks like you have a good plan in place there, and I'm glad you're all able to um, negotiate through to good, to good outcomes.
The only thing I, if I, if I may, just tell me when I can talk.
We have a, we have a, a public comment policy, we've
Right.
um, that we've had to modify. So first, I need to ask the board of trustees if you are comfortable accepting um, comments on topics on the agenda this evening. Yes, yes, okay, go ahead, John.
Yeah, my only comment was, and I just wanted to point it out, that um, a lot of this, this effort was based on uh, climate smart environmental concerns, because the impetus behind this was for our late nineteen twenties house to be net zero, which we finally accomplished
Done.
late last year and started with the solar panels, so that we could be all electric um, in terms of our transportation, which we have, and also heating and cooling, which we've just accomplished sort of late last year, um, by putting in an air sourced heat pump system, so.
As long as Jeff told me about it and I knew about it.
We've been, and then we get grants.
And I'm interested in what you said about climate smart committee and I and contributing if I can.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm an, an animal from the automotive industry who was quite disenchanted with the way it was going when I was an engineering student and turned to law. And um, this has been kind of a lifelong quest in a sense. And, and the reason with the trees is they were starting to shade the solar panels and that gives us a nice supply to help uh, supplement the, you know, it's like our, it's like our um, substitute gas pump for the electric vehicles. So, so that's a big reason in the, and I realized that that was not a part of the criteria of the tree advisory board. Um, and the only thing that I would comment on is, is that, you know, if indeed the trimming takes place and there can be some additional top trimming to help with that, then that would be something I would, uh, you know, uh, urge at this point, you know, without, cause there's one particular part they're taking off. And um, I'm not sure that it's gonna completely solve that problem, that's all.
Well, we have accepted the recommendations that were um, achieved through that process. And so we'll get through that and, and see where we are.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much, and do connect to Laura, be chat after.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, um, any other members of the public who wish to comment this evening? Okay, um, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Hi, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Very exciting, and what the other thing you said before you came in was, uh, we are recognizing that there are maintenance